Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Little sound check. Video check. So Casey is not able to join us this evening. His son has advanced in baseball, so they're off at tournament things. So, looks like we are all here.
It's not just a regular tournament, it's the state championship tournament.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive. All right, if we can get everyone's cameras on, then we, so I can get eyes on people, all right. So we will go ahead and get started. All right, it is six o'clock. I would like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the Tombwater School District sits on the ancestral land of the Nisqually, Squawson Island and Shaheilas people. I thank these caretakers of the land who've lived on and continue to live on the land since time immemorial. Please rise as I lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks all. Superintendent Bogutson, have there been any changes or additions to the agenda since it was published?
No changes or additions.
Okay, now move on to meeting minutes review. The minutes from the June 12th meeting have been distributed to the board. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, minutes are approved as presented. Now moving on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda have been provided to the board. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. We will now move on to public comments. Before we begin, I'd like to remind members of the public that if you wish to have addressed the board during the public comment portion of this meeting, you would have needed to fill out the public comment form available on the district website by nine AM today. If you miss this opportunity, you're welcome to sign up for the next regular board meeting or email your comments to the board and/or superintendent. Contact information is on the district website. Becky, did you receive any submissions?
I did not.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to reports to the board. Superintendent Bogutson will present the school resource officer annual report.
Can you hear me okay on this computer? I know I think last time is a little muffled, yeah. And I, and I tried to put a new camera in today and it didn't, I couldn't get it to load. I could go to my web, my laptop, I don't know Becky, if you want, can you put me on that by, by chance? I don't know if you see me on, oop, there we go. All right, I'm gonna mute the same type, sorry. Okay. All right, we're into a little multitasking here. Okay. Audio player. My turn.
You're scaring me. You sound like the Borg.
Trying to figure out. That one's off, okay, I think I'm figuring this out. We're better, okay, but you don't, still can't see me, once I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. So, I'm here to talk a little bit about our, our, the history of our SRO program. And, just to kind of for context, you probably are aware that our SRO contract is coming due in December. So this is really a beginning of that conversation around, just to relook at this program and some data and just a little bit of history. So we have had an SRO active in the school district since at least 2013. And that was kind of what I could find and kind of reaffirm that like officially, contractually. So whether it goes earlier than that, I couldn't necessarily find. And I know there was something from the city that said, I think I remember reading that maybe it went back to 2008. So it's very possible that we've had SROs as, as far back, kind of in their mid, kind of that 2008, 2010 kind of, but minimally into 2013. And so those duties, you know, one of the things that's really clear, the SROs in Tombwater have really played a crucial role. And I think sometimes it's not with what people think. I think sometimes you think, you know, are, you know, this really strong police presence. And I know if they're here to talk to you today, that their number one issue and number one thing is about mentoring and building relationships with students. It is also providing certainly a level of presence in campus security. It is providing a law enforcement presence when laws are broken. So they do do some of that, and we'll go into a little bit of the detail around that. They do quite a bit of education and outreach, and so they are going out into elementary schools, into middle schools, doing programs and conversations and presentations on school safety, crosswalk safety, you know, all those kinds of things, stranger danger, all those conversations become part of the work of the SRO. And then they work collaboratively with us, you know, in the past, oh, post Columbine era, there's just a lot of conversations around, what does it take to make sure that schools are safe places for kids and families? This idea that you can create a completely, if you kind of use a, a green, yellow, red, like, green is like, there is no, nothing can happen at your school. I think those days of where that idea is like, where we can just ensure the absolute safety of everyone has gone away and just sort of, a lot of, we hear about every incident. And so this idea of making sure that our schools are as safe as possible. And on the other side of this is, we are well-prepared to address and to kind of monitor, so we, we do things now like threat assessment. So we start to get early indicators of threats into our system. And again, if you're making a threat, we're doing a really comprehensive process to look deeply into that. We work kind of hand in hand, not only with our school, local police department, but they also work with, you know, federal agencies, FBI, CIA, especially as any kind of credible threats come, and really diving deep into things so that we are keeping these schools. So they really play an essential role in sort of that preventative safety measure. And then really preparation around, how do we respond in any kind of safety threat, safety issue, lots of conversations then about reunification and how do we do that? And they really play a really key link around that school district, public safety, and a bunch of other agencies that would come into play on any kind of crisis, any kind of emergency, anything that happens with, with kids. So they also, again, are, are present at countless events. And I think probably most of you have seen them, if you go to sports, that's a kind of a key place you see them. But there are a lot of other things, you know, probably one of the last things in my mind is we had Fiesta, and I see our SROs, but I also see, like, that was one of those events that, you know, they're coordinating and connecting with agencies from across the region, including some of our parents bringing their, you know, coming in their clothes. And so that relationship and connection is really important to our school district. One of the things that was requested was to look at some data. And so this is, this is, it was, it took a little work to do, and we have it in a variety of day, a variety of ways. We have kind of raw data, they collect this on a monthly basis, so we don't really do a comprehensive. So we thought though, this would be an initial look, and if you want it to look somewhat different, because we could do it by school, by, by month, by lots of different things. This was sort of a big picture snapshot, maybe for the first time, if you haven't really seen SRO data and what they're tracking. And if you've read the paper recently, the, the city council for Tombwater has requested sort of a data piece into the contract. And so again, I don't know if they know that they already collect data, so this may be right in alignment with what they already want to see. And then maybe as this board wants to see this data, they also want to see it. And again, maybe you want to see something else. So this is the, the data that we are currently, or they are currently tracking and reporting back to the school district, who we get this monthly. And then we meet at the district level to talk about some of these things and go maybe more into detail. And did we follow up on this? And just kind of that post-incident, whether it's a medical incident or an event, something that happened, there was a fight and the police responded. We kind of talk about, should we do some different things around safety, security? Should we respond differently? Do we need to do some follow-ups? So they're really helpful in just even the follow-up where they might be involved. So you can kind of see the number one thing, if you're looking at this data, I could share my screen if that would be helpful. I don't know if you want to see. Do you want to see that data up on the screen, or you have it?
I'm looking at it, I don't know if it might be, make it easier for people who are watching the, what, watching the meeting, maybe it's easier if you put it on the screen.
Let me see if I can pull that up here real quick. Okay, and we'll make this a little bit bigger. Is that good?
Yeah.
So this is, so again, you can kind of really see the, you know, not, not a big surprise that the number of things that they're tracking. The, the number one thing is just student discipline. And this is again, like, there's, there's way more discipline, things that happen in our school. So while this number looks the largest of this, these are things that rise to a level where law enforcement would, like, is a potential law broken here? So this is end up, when we talk about discipline referrals, this is around, you've made a threat? You have physically injured somebody? And that probably lands there, and I know they could probably clarify this a little bit closer around, where does a qualify? They typically, and I, I think this is a confusing thing, they don't do student discipline. So that is not what they're hired to do. We have administrators, their role as student discipline, our teachers play a role in student discipline. We have, we have lots of people. This is, their involvement specifically rises to, not necessarily that a crime occurred, but a potential crime occurred. So a sexual assault, you brought a weapon to school. There's a threat where you, we end up maybe engaging with them on some bullying harassment, again, where potential crimes are committed, and they end up working with us. And then it kind of works from there, and you see sort of the rest of these things. The next highest is really around a student or parent reporting concern. And so again, this relationship and partnership with the police department and our school district has really helping keep kids safe. And you kind of see where they have characterized as self-harm, potential endanger. And I think those are pieces that I, I think you could kind of suicide ideation pieces where, hey, can you connect with my child? Can you look into this? I'm really concerned. So I think again, the number one next thing is right there. And then you kind of look at other things, again, kind of across the, the board. And again, I don't have the details of this, and we could, we could dig into more of this further. I wanted you to see sort of the bigger picture of this. And I also thought it was interesting, they had a category where they have arrests or citations on campus, and that was a zero. So they did not, so there was no current, like, arrest, which I thought actually was surprising, because I kind of thought, really, we didn't have a, any kind of like drug or alcohol or marijuana or something like to that effect that was arrested. And apparently, again, I don't know whether that shows up in a different place, but on campus, following up on that was, was zero reported. So, again, that doesn't mean it didn't happen, but it's like, did it rise to maybe them doing arrest or citation? So I thought it was, yeah, something interesting. Again, a little bit of some things, again, that I thought were a little bit surprising, you can, I'll take questions or you can look at this. The traffic and vehicle and bike theft, and so they actually do play a role in the, you know, parking lots. We have a lot of video around, so I know that they're looking at video. I remember them looking at a video of a car accident, and just kind of seeing like, what happened and can we see anything on video? But again, there's accidents, people, kids hit other cars and adults hit other cars, and there's some of that happening and speeding through our zones and some of that. So there's a bit of that piece that they help follow up and making sure, again, if you just kind of always go back there, helping keep our schools and campuses as safe as possible. And then, I don't know, just take any questions or any of your, your thoughts or questions or any other follow-up that you'd like to see on that piece, let me get out of this here. Stop share, okay. And then maybe a question, is this the data that you're looking for? As you see, our next contract is looking to have some language. Is this the kind of thing that you want to continue to see? Are there other things you want to see it differently in the future?
Any questions for Kevin?
So how much does the contract cost the district?
Good question. So the contract is in your packet, and if you kind of look at there, I don't, I'm trying to pull it up here. Does someone else have that, if they're looking at, they're looking at the documentation in this? I'm looking up, hang on, stand by. It is in there, twenty-three, there we go. It's, this is a draft agreement, that part has been updated. And they're looking at a couple of minor changes, and this is sort of the preliminary, sort of transition. The other parts in this presentation or in the report were our current agreement. And then, the, the city has already proposed or already submitted a new updated twenty-six, twenty-eight agreement, so expires in December. This is the, this would be January of twenty, starting in twenty-twenty-six. The total cost of the contract is over a three-year period of time is six hundred and, it's roughly six hundred and ten thousand dollars. So basically, basically two hundred thousand dollars a year.
And then do you have the, what it was currently?
Oh.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, it was easy to find now. Last, the last contract, so this was the twenty-three to twenty-five was five hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Five thirty-eight, I hear you right.
Five thirty-eight, so probably more like about, so this is, you kind of see about a twenty-five thousand dollar a year increase approximately. And this is, yeah, and one of the things that is in this is, and just, just for the record, is like, we, we pay for one, they pay for one. So that's sort of just how this agreement works. We have two SROs, and it is a split cost between the city and, and this is like full cost, so this is salary benefits, all that piece is included in this.
So that's about a thirteen point three eight percent increase?
Yeah, I didn't do the percentage increase, but.
In looking at the math, it looks like ten thousand dollars a year.
Approximately, okay, yeah. That was up for the, since the last contract was.
And do we pay the contract annually, or do we pay it upfront?
It's, I believe, I believe it's an annual payment, so we have a set, a schedule, and we pay, we pay that, we don't pay like this.
It says in the contract, it's, they, in, the city invoices the district on a quarterly basis.
There you go, thank you.
You said they pay for half, the city does, and then we pay for half.
They pay for one officer and we pay for the other.
Okay.
So the, the six hundred and ten thousand, Joe, is for one officer for three years?
Yes.
But that's what our cost is. So then they're, they're going to pay their own person too, okay?
Yes, yeah.
Because we always have two, two people at, all the time, when I, okay.
Correct, yeah. There, and there has been, there has been conversations sort of maybe in the background of expanding, there's some been, and I'd say not necessarily from our team, has not really talked about that, but I've heard folks from, from the city saying that they would, there's some interest in expanding that, whether it be through grants or doing some other things, or doing Sheridan. Again, I don't, not something, I don't think either organization is prepared or has the resources to expand this program at this time. So that is not, you don't see that anywhere in part of this conversation. There's really no expansion in this, in this contract over the next three years.
So then each year, the, the two hundred and three thousand dollars approximately for one officer?
Yeah.
Okay. That's pretty good.
So I think that, I don't really anything else to prepare unless you have other questions about, I think, some next steps. We're having some preliminary kind of a next conversation. I do have, I do have, at one point, there was just conversation around, since we're in this budget cycle, we have a new, you, you know the budget issues, we're going to talk a little bit more about that tonight, as we prepare for this future budget. Like, interest in, are there options? And I think really there is only one other option for SROs in our community, which is the Thurston County Sheriff's Department. I was hoping to get really a more clear direction. I do have a meeting scheduled with the police, the, with Sheriff Sanders and Thurston County next week or the week after, so in the next couple of weeks. And just, I had kind of said, hey, are you interested and can you do this? So I don't have an answer to that, but a, a request to meet with me, and so maybe if, one of the things that they might, I don't know. So I have that meeting scheduled, I'll report back to you after that occurs. But just again, not necessarily that we're looking to change, but I thought just even to be responsible with taxpayer resources, it's like, it's, it's prudent for us to look at our other agency that could provide the service. They do provide it for other agencies or other school districts in our region. So I thought it was at least, we should at least look at it. And then I can come back, if they are interested, I'll come back, the future meeting, we do have some time here before it's official. I do know, so I'm not saying this, that the Tombwater Police Department, I've met with the police chief, so he is well aware, he understood that, yes, given our financial situation, of course you would look at that. And, so he understood that, but we will either be serious about that or move on pretty quickly, and so I, I don't think we want to drag this out too long. But in the next few weeks, we will have kind of some clarity about, are we looking at just a, and then finalizing an agreement that will go into place in January? Or are we interested in looking at kind of two options?
So I, I was looking through the contract, and I think there's a lot of things that they do, but it's not necessarily written in the contract, so I don't know. I don't know if that should be in the contract or not. So that, that's, that was just my thought was, are there things, we know they help with threat assessments, but it just, it just talks about like training people to do threat assessments, not actually doing them. So I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure what that means. And then also, if they don't help us with disaster plans or reunification plans or anything like that, then it falls to one of our staff people. And I know that they do help us with that, but, so I think it's all part of the services they provide, but it's not in the contract. So I, it's up to you, since you're managing the contract, and you know, that, that's all I noticed with, I know what they do, but it's not all written in this contract of what they do for us.
Yeah, and I think we can engage in that conversation around, does, do we capture some of that? I think maybe it's like, I think the things that they play a critical role that we're expecting them to do, because I, I think they would probably say is, we're a part of your, your crisis response, but we're not going to create your plan for you. We will be part of your training, we will help organize, organize training, we will do some things.
Okay.
But I don't think.
Oh, that's helpful to know.
Yeah, you own your plan, and I think that's probably the role that they play. I think there is, again, there's probably things I thought you were going to maybe bring up, that I don't think is in here, is sort of the after hours and how do we look at that, and are we paying? And I don't, I don't know if that's, you know, when they show up, do we do some swap out? And I don't know whether that, this contract, I can't remember, I mean, I've read this now a while back, and I can't remember if we talked about that. But I think it's a conversation around, or a request, if, again, I know we can say, it's like, if you request them to be at a school board meeting, do we have something in the contract that says, yes, they'll be here? And that we can ask twice a year, even as a report, they're expected to come to a board meeting report. So I don't know if that's in here, and I think, because I think maybe that is part of what even the city council's talking about, because if you're going to say, I want some data, I would think you would also maybe want to see them, meet them, and get that information directly from them, at least annually, maybe.
The, the other thing I didn't see in there, and I think we are, again, I think we are included, but when they make choices of who is the SRO, like, are we part of that decision? I believe we are, but it's not in here.
Yeah, and I think we're going to have that opportunity here, we do have an SRO that's retiring, and so they will. And I do believe we are going to play a role. I, I know the final decision is not ours, so we just, we kind of play as a, as a member of that hiring team.
Yeah.
I apologize, I have a little cold, and I need to blow my nose. I should try to. I apologize if I sneeze here in the middle of any of this too, so that is also possible.
I was going to blame audio on your raspy voice, but.
No, it's, I, I, I should, I don't know, I traveled on an airplane, and this is what I get for it, so.
That's what happens, yeah, that's what I figured. That's all, that's all I noticed in, in the contract. It sounded like you wanted our feedback on the contract, so that, that's all I noticed.
I think this, at this time, that wasn't, we really, I just wanted you to have that as a, as a sort of preliminary, we can have, and I think maybe we, I talked to President Kike in around, do we want to assign a couple of board members who are interested in really engaging, maybe with the city, and really finalizing this and come back? And if you have feedback, we certainly will take that. I don't, we weren't necessarily wanting to go into big conversation necessarily about the contract right now. It's not due till December, so we're not quite to that space around, here's our new contract to, to look at. I think we need to get the answer around Thurston County Sheriff, and then kind of move forward with that.
It, it seems fair to ask for a, I don't know, quarterly report to the board, and it could be written, or whatever people want, maybe it's just a written report to the board?
Yeah, I think we're going to have mutual interests that the city and us have, and if, if you guys want a little bit of that included, we can, I think we'll be able to find some common ground there.
Right, any other questions? Okay. So next, we will have Ben Rarick and Kira Acker present the twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary budget review.
Good evening, everybody, can everybody hear me? And can everybody hear Kira?
Hello, hello, everyone.
Becky, am I sharing on my side, or are you sharing?
I've got it here, Ben.
Oh, they can see it?
Um, almost. Should be able to see it now.
Yeah.
Doesn't everyone see that?
I think we're good.
Yep, all right.
Okay, good evening, board members. This is a briefer budget status update to reflect some new data we have for you. But just before we get into this, know that as we get into the two budget hearings we have scheduled in the middle and end of August, you'll have a much more robust briefing, but there is some new information to share, so that being said, we'll move you through some content. We're going to give you a, a highlight of the budget that was submitted for technical review to the ESD, and we're going to return to some budget policy and procedure conversations that we started in June. So this is how the timeline is going to play out throughout the summer. So we did submit a, a budget for technical review on July tenth, that's now in the hands of the ESD, and they run a battery of tests on it and come back to us with questions about individual programs, and that process will, will play out for the next, you know, four to six weeks. Today, we're having a budget update, and then you'll start to see our advertisements. So I think as we shared with the board before, particularly when you're going through a budget that's not just sort of a, when you're going through a budget where there is meaningful change, we, I historically like to do two hearings rather than one, because by October twenty-eighth, the board will be asked to take a vote on the budget. So we have scheduled two hearings, one on August fourteenth, and then one on the twenty-eighth, which is the day of the vote. So you'll start to see, I believe in the Olympian advertisement, starting at the end of the month, running all the way through, because we're recorded by law to make those advertisements to the public, to make them aware that there's a budget proposal, where they can access it, and when they can speak to it. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's some new information, so now we're through, we have month-end cash through June, and this is tracking pretty much as we had predicted. So now, we're, we're now in our fourth month of negative cash. And so, remember, we're providing you two lines here. The, the kind of solid mustard-colored line is what the cash balance would be without the loan that we've taken out from ourselves to the capital fund. And then the dotted line, the dotted, the dashed line, if you will, black line shows what the balance, the cash balance truly is with the loan. So we put, we have one point four million dollars in cash in our treasures account for the general fund, but without the loan, we would be at negative two point two million dollars. Next slide, please. Okay, Kira, do you want to take them through the next few slides?
Uh, yeah, sure. So we do have the fee schedule that I believe we're going to be approving in the next, after the discussion. And I'll go, I can go through a little bit more about that after there's some additional slides that. Um, and I'll go, I can go through a little bit more about that, um, after there's some additional slides that um, talk about the addition to that fee schedule with football. But there was no change to our, um, our lunch and breakfast meal rates. We kept those the same. Um, and, um, oh, it says right there, number three, only new, the only new fee schedule, um, will be their our helmet. So, um, two new things, we have, um, added a um, a fee for middle school, um, helmets, uh, twenty-five dollars for middle school and forty dollars for high school. So, um, you know, that's very low. Um, I've been looking at some of the other rates that we act that districts in our area actually charge, um, our our pay to play is very low um, compared to some of the other districts, and they actually even in other districts charge more for football, um, to play football. So, um, you know, a minimal fee that will help offset some of our costs for, um, for football is, um, you know, very, I I hope, I think is gonna be very doable for man, for families. And actually, if they are on the free and reduced program, um, of course, because of, uh, House Bill sixteen sixty, they won't have to pay either. So, um, I don't think that it will affect families too much, but it will definitely help our athletics program. Next, um, so here's just a slides, uh, the the first summary slide, and it's actually on our website now. Um, it just shows this, the date stamp of seven ten, which is when it was due to the board, so we are due to the ESD, so we got that turned in. Um, and like Ben said, they're going through the, um, the review right now. Um, you know, looking at enrollment, um, this is broken out by by elementary, our K twelve subtotal, um, some of the biggest changes, um, our K twelve subtotal, actually by aggregate, it is going to be lower. Um, the budget is built on, um, a decrease of, um, thirty-nine or forty students. Um, so we have balanced the budget and and are adding back to the fund balance, and we'll look at that in the next few slides. But our New Market, you can see an increase of our New Market Skill Center. Last year's budget was four seventy, now we've raised that to five ten. Um, our running start numbers from one eighty to two twenty-five, um, something we've really had conversations about all year. And then also our ALE program, so that's, uh, Cascadia. And New Market High School, that's one seventy to up to two ten. So we've really increased those budgets, um, and those are, those are offsetting the, um, the decrease in in K twelve. Here's just a a preliminary, um, the fund summary of each one of the funds. And again, like Ben says, we're really gonna dive deep into this in our hearing. Um, in our first hearing, the meeting in August fourteenth, we'll we'll walk you through all of these funds, the revenues and expenses and where the increases and decreases are, but the top, um, the top bar there is the the fund summary of of last year's budget of twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So you can see that we, um, budgeted for a decrease of two point one million, um, but that obviously is not what has has come out in this budget, or as we've, you know, walked through our our financials this this year, that's, um, we're actually ending, looking, ending the year at, I believe it was two point three. Um, so here, that the budget shows an estimated six point four million. So we know, we've been talking about this, that's not a surprise, but we've definitely have adjusted for for this budget. I'm looking at, uh, estimating ending fund balance of four point eight. So, um, so it's really, you know, it's a it's a different, it's a different budget. Um, you know, we've been working on it for months and you can see the difference between the twenty-four, twenty-five and the twenty-five, twenty-six and not summaries there. ASB, the same way, we know we were are looking at decreasing, um, the fund balance there. And, um, and again, in our in our hearings, we'll get into all of the, um, we'll dive deeper into all of the details. So one of the questions that I believe that we had last year or at our last meeting, um, was about ASB fund balances, and, um, there are some questions just about how much, um, if we're shifting purchases from our general fund over to our ASB, over to our ASB fund, you can see you can see that increase of our ASB fund. We have pretty robust ASB funds right now. And we have, um, for the last few years, and they've continued to increase. So, um, these pro- these changes that we're proposing, um, are definitely are supported for next year. As you can see, our our ending fund balance, um, in is currently a hun- or eight hundred and eleven thousand. So, um, that's district wide. Um, we have well over fifty thousand in each, um, middle school account. And so um, and then up upwards of two hundred and fifty thousand in, um, in each high school account. So so they're, um, pretty well established right now. Um, you know, these changes that we're proposing, we're not saying would happen forever, but I think just in, you know, for for next year, um, looking at that at based on our fund balance, it's it's definitely doable for, um, for our schools. So, um, we wanted to revisit this slide, and this was the slide that we had looked at last, um, last of the last time that we all met. Um, and there was some really good discussion around, um, the new Thurston County travel rule. Um, and then our new proposed fifty mile travel rural radius. Um, you know, we we looked a lot at, um, at at neighboring districts, what neighboring districts were doing, um, and both Olympia and North Thurston School Districts have the um, you know, the self-transport within our, um, um, within Thurston County. So that is something that our neighboring districts are doing. Um, it's just, you know, it's, um, I think that Ben, you can go ahead and chime in here whenever you're ready, but we're, um, you know, looking at what other schools, this this wouldn't be a huge shift in, um, what we're currently doing now. Um, as far as some of our, our, uh, our schools right now have been, um, within Thurston County have been, um, self-transporting. And so I don't think it would be a huge shift for families to, you know, to see a, some of these rules. The other piece that I think I wanted to really share is that with with the, um, with these new rules, we're going to give our our athletic directors a lot, um, you know, of discretion to make sure that you know, if they, if they think that a bus is necessary within north, within the Thurston County, um, especially down in like Tenino and Rochester, if if they feel that it's important based on the, the, um, the game and the team themselves to be able to, um, to have dispatch a bus and 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 travel, you know, travel with those students, then then they're gonna be able to do that. It's not a hard and fast rule. It doesn't need to be that way, and we've, you know, we we're not proposing that. It's just, um, having them be conscious of of how much, um, we are traveling and when it, when it's appropriate for for our students to be able to self-transport. Um, some of the other, go ahead.
Oh, I I'm I'm glad you said that. That was the one point I wanted to emphasize that I don't think we said last time was that it does sort of portray on the on the PowerPoint as like this hard and fast rule. In fact, it's called a rule. But the conversations we've been having with the A Ds over the last, I don't know, four to six months have ultimately came around to the fact that, you know, there are gonna be some situations where, you know, for whatever circumstance, it's like, no, for this one, you know what, we really do need to schedule a bus. Um, and we agreed that we would sort of go through the year that way, you know? Um, and give the athletic directors, directors the discretion to make uh, make a call now again in consultation with us, um, as we work in this new protocol. Uh, I don't have anything more to say about this one. Um, if, was it a board member or was that you, Kara?
That was me, but, um, I I was fine with with, I wanted, I had everything I wanted to share.
Okay, let's go to the next slide. Alright, so, uh, board members, I wanted to kind of pan out and pan up a little bit and think about the next six months a little. Um, uh, there's some big things coming around the bend, even when we eventually adopt a budget, like, we're gonna kind of transition right into some really big work. Um, and I want the board to be aware of it. So the first thing is the interfund loan. So remember, you took, I think we had you vote on, we had, we we had you vote on that, I believe, in December or January. And we'll need it again next year. So what will happen procedurally is that when you adopt your budget, you will also, you'll either take a separate resolution or we'll incorporate it into your budget resolution. Either way, to, uh, accept effectively take a two-step process, you pay back the loan to close the year that you're just finishing. And then you will retake out a loan for the next year. So you'll see a lot of paperwork that might be potentially confusing, but that's in essence what's happening. So the state asks you to pay the loan out to close your books. And then to the extent that you need it, again, you retake it out. Um, the only difference being that now by state law, we don't have to pay interest on that loan, which is a a small win for us. Um, we're in the midst of bargaining right now, and we hope for that to come to conclusion, uh, prior to the beginning of the school year. And then, of course, we have the certification for the levy, so the board will have the opportunity to take advantage of the new law. Uh, that allows districts to collect up to the amount that the, uh, voters have authorized up to a new cap. The one thing I did wanna highlight here that we haven't spoken about before, or at least in depth is almost right after we adopt this budget, we're gonna flip into, um, a capital levy, um, mode. Um, you know, a typical cadence for that, and we're gonna put some of these materials in your, um, in your hearing materials, because it does tie into the budget a little bit. But a typical cadence for that is if you're gonna go out to the ballot in February, um, the board would typically take an authorization resolution in the fall, like October or November to say yes, we understand, you know, the amount we're going out for, the length of time we're going out for it and why we're going out for it. And it basically provides the board an opportunity to dig in, ask questions, kind of talk about the future of the capital, uh, needs of the school district and, you know, at what point the district will be able to go out for a bond, um, which I think the superintendent has, um, you know, let me know on multiple occasions that that's a that's a leadership priority for him over over the longer term. Um, so expect those conversations to accelerate in August, September and October, uh, of this year and to have if 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 all remains the same, something on the ballot, uh, in, uh, February of twenty twenty-six. And then, of course, um, we're launching our new strategic plan. Um, and I think you're gonna be hearing more, uh, from Megan and Kevin on that, uh, but that's also like a huge endeavor for us as we go into next school year. Uh, two more, uh, house cleaning items of note, if I may. Um, the first is, you probably noticed going all the way back to November, how much feedback and public input you received on the budget. Um, obviously, this was a a difficult budget. But our commitment has always been that, um, we would not shy away from the input. And when you hear that input, you gotta take it seriously and, uh, consider it. Because that's why you do it, uh, is to hear, hear the voices of the people that are impacted. Um, by request of at least two board members, um, and as a function of probably several hundred letters that the superintendent has received, uh, I was asked to kind of take a new look at the role that Keith Mitchell plays, um, in the school district with regards to the music program. And so just wanted to put the board on, uh, notice that the budget that will be brought to you will, um, seek to kind of reinstate Keith and the role that he was in. Um, and then if you vote yes on the budget, you would be voting yes on, um, on that. His situation is really unique in the sense that he was not, he didn't lose a position as a, um, parent educator, he was still gonna be with the district. The question was whether we would have a dedicated para to the music program. But the input from students, uh, the input from parents, um, and the input from board members, um, was pretty overwhelming. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe he was voted employee of the year, um, two months ago. So uh, that was one item that I wanted to come back to the board with. The second item is that another issue that received some attention was, um, uh, you'll recall that during the resolutions that the board saw and took action on, the district, um, put forth a plan to eliminate two um, manager administrator positions in favor of one consolidated position. That was a position that previously existed in transportation and one that previously existed in safety. So I'm also giving the board a heads up that there will be a administrative position posting that goes out and naturally you would, people will ask, well, wait a second, I thought we weren't hiring, you know? And just to remind the board that this is part of the original plan, that this budget, um, and this budget includes the elimination of two original, uh, admin positions and the, uh, addition of one for a net reduction of one. And this position will essentially be split across two areas. Um, and they'll have responsibilities for transportation safety, um, and student behavior management, which is a really big issue in our district. Uh, as well as, uh, school safety, apropos to the conversation you were having earlier about SROs. As we've dug into this, we realized even even in hiring one person to do both those jobs, that person is gonna have more work to do than one person can do. So it really ultimately was not seen as a viable option not to fill this position. So you will see the posting, you might get emails about it, but, um, we feel like we've made a sound decision after lengthy consideration that this is something that the Tom Water School District needs. That's all I have. If there are any questions for Kara or myself or the superintendent.
Questions, thank you.
Uh, sorry, so can I ask a quick question? So, uh, the loan that we're gonna re, uh, do in September, uh, any idea of what that dollar amount's going to be?
Yeah, right now, we're assuming the same dollar amount. We might reduce it, but frankly, there's no incentive to reduce it because we don't pay interest on it anymore. So we'll probably just, just for simplicity, take out the same dollar amount loan.
Okay, so does that show we've made progress or not?
Well, we'll definitely be able to show that we're making progress because our cash balances, um, will improve. Um, and frankly, it won't become a consideration until the capital fund would have any reason to like even notice the difference in the cash reserve. Um, but we'll, we'll definitely be able to show our progress. And I, and I, and I have plenty of metrics to be able to demonstrate that to you. I guess I'd say like, if if there's a feeling on the board that that for symbolic reasons or whatever, you'd wanna see a lower number, we could I mean, we could go through the process of calculating a slightly lower lower number if that was, you know, if that was of interest to the board, but and if if it doesn't come from the board, we intend to just do the same amount.
So, so I think that might be a good gesture to have the new less.
Alright, duly noted. We'll, uh, we'll take a look at that.
And we can also look at it as a cap too. So, I mean, we can't, obviously, we can't transfer more than what you approve. But we don't have to transfer all of it either. Um, but I mean, of course, we can bring back, you know, an analysis of of what type of transfer we'll need, but, um, we don't have to transfer it all at once either.
Yeah, that's that's a good point, actually. But Director Adams, I hear what you're saying, and it's not a problem to take a look at that, so we will.
Thank you.
Dr. Keel, did you have a? I don't know if I should be directing this.
Uh, yeah, I have a question. Uh, Ben or or Kara, can you go back up to the athletics ASB changes slide, just for a second?
Oh, this one?
No, okay, that one.
That one. I guess my question on this one, um, the helmet rental fees and stuff, uh, my understanding is Tom Water Middle School doesn't even have football anymore, because they don't get enough turnout. Is that correct? So is this just for essentially just for the Bush kids?
I was not aware that the Tom Water Middle School didn't have a football team, but if they didn't, then yes, it would just be for the, for the the Bush students.
And I guess the other, the other part of my question would be, um, I I think I remember seeing this a long time ago, but do we know the costs of what the middle school football even costs to the, to the school district? Did I remember seeing something like thirty-five thousand a year or something? Or was it more or less than that?
I, I, I don't have that right up my tip. I don't know if you do, Kara, but we could bring it to the hearing is one thing.
Yes, I don't have exactly what the cost is for, for just middle school football.
I guess what I'm getting at is I don't understand why we play middle school football when we have a youth league that covers the exact same kids and they play on both teams at the same time.
You know, that has come up, Dr. Keel. Uh, in one of the, one of the athletic director meetings.
My, my understanding is even, I think it's Centralia School District. They don't have middle school football or something, but, but what they, I, I, and I could be wrong on the school district. Maybe it's Chehalis or a different one. I'm not sure. But instead of playing middle school football, they just give like a stipend to the free and reduced students so that they can play in the public league. Is that maybe an option for us since we already have a valid league so that we can not have kids playing in two teams at once and not have the expense in the school district?
Yes. Well, to be clear, like, you know, the options for the district are whatever the board decides the options for the district are, you know, like you're the policymakers of this district and it's our job to make a budget that fits that. Now, having said that, we have talked about that as a group. Megan and I and the two A Ds, I think Kara was there. And, and I don't wanna put words in the athletic director's mouth and I'm gonna make a good faith effort to summarize here, but one of the considerations was yes, we do have a T C Y F L and yes, it's, there's robust participation there, but there is a consideration to like how you build a program. And that the middle school program feeds into the high school program. And that there was a value there, like there was a five, like, like there was a feeling that part of the value that the Tom Water community puts into this football program is that there's a like, there's a vertical articulation that the kids start in the middle school program and that builds to the, builds to the, builds to then they get the high school program and that, then they're all kind of in this culture of the program. You're right, other districts don't do it that way. And we did have that discussion and there was a lot of sort of what's reasonable talk, you know? Most of what you see on this page is pretty much being done in one shape, one way, shape or form by our neighbors. And again, I don't wanna attribute it to one of the athletic directors or another, maybe both, but there was a feeling that, that, that having a program at middle school mattered.
Um, I just did confirm that Tom Water Middle School does have football.
Director Adams.
So I guess my thinking is, is having two boys and run through the different programs, both school programs and just athletic outside of the school programs. One of the things that I think is important is that the school programs, we have policies of inclusion. And there are some kids that aren't the best at athletics, but they wanna give it a try, you know, especially at middle school. And I'm afraid if we dump our district program, then you're not gonna give these kids who might not be athletic stars, but they want to at least give it a go, an opportunity.
Yep. That was absolutely part of the discussion. We, at one point, we, you know, very early on, we were discussing with them the idea of like cuts versus no cuts. And the, the no cuts philosophy is very much about what you're talking about, which is that for a lot of kids, it's their first and possibly last access to school sports. And there's a value of inclusion in the activities in the district. And so for that reason, we stayed clear of, of cuts. Does some districts do that? Some districts limit the size and, you know? I, I, I wanted to say one more thing about this if I could. Unless there are other questions.
I, I had a question on this kind of related to the budget, but if you wanted to go ahead.
No, no, you're, you're the priority.
Okay. So my question kind of goes back to, so we had a very robust discussion at our last meeting about the, the size of the ASB fund and how you all had been kind of digging in and trying to understand where everything is going. I see there that bullet point about pay-to-play revenues go to general fund and noticed in one of the previous, or maybe it was the subsequent slide where I think the, do you guys have for the upcoming budget, the revenues have dropped like in half for ASB? Is that accurate? Like where you have the twenty-four, twenty-five on the top and then you have the twenty-five, twenty-six on, oh, I've got it in front of me. Let me find slide I'm referencing here.
Yeah, I know.
That one. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So can I clarify that first? So part of what you see happen there is that when you put a budget out there in like, you know, say, May of the previous school year, you have no idea how much fundraising the kids are gonna do. So most of the time, the budget that you're putting out there, like you see in twenty-four, twenty-five is a way upward bound estimate because you don't wanna have to come back and revise it. And basically the kids are gonna raise the money they're gonna raise. So you don't wanna have, you don't wanna be caught off guard by, you know, there's a big fundraiser, but they weren't authorized to revenue that money. So districts typically over, over budget the revenue in ASB. And so the twenty-four, twenty-five, as you'll see in the year-end data, they didn't raise anywhere close to one point two million dollars, right? So it looks like the ASB budget is gonna be cut in half. That's not actually what's happening. It's just that we are budgeting tighter to what we actually think the program will raise.
And same with the expenditures though, did they actually expend one point four?
Yeah, no.
No, they did not.
Kara, do you happen to have those? I guess that would be in the June financial statement, but I don't have that right at my, well, Director, if, if I could bring, like, if we could note that, I will answer that question specifically in the budget.
Yeah. And so just, you know, continuing to, to circle around football a little bit because it had been something that had come up every year for several years around the, these excess funds available in ASB, but yet the pay-to-play cost was never going down. It was always eighty-five dollars a year, at least Tom Water High School. I don't know about anywhere else. And then, you know, for, for football and Kara, you had mentioned, you know, that our pay-to-play is, is cheaper and, you know, in some, as compared to some of our neighboring districts, but um, I mean, the reality is, is that we, we also pay three hundred and fifty dollars in the summer for football. So there's a, a huge additional cost that goes along with it. And now with this new, you know, helmet fee, and I completely understand like football is a very expensive sport. But I think I'm just trying to get to the very tail end of reconciling. By, on one hand, I get it as part of the deal when you participate in that sport, but on the other hand, I know that there was all of this money. There, at least it seemed like that ASB was flush and it was, it's just a little frustrating because there are some families that that is a, that's a really, really big deal. And, and you want to talk, again, we're talking about equity. T C Y F L actually has very clear rules about how many plays per student are able to, or not student, because they're not students and playing that football, but that, I mean, my son went through middle school, they didn't have those same kind of rules around how many plays you get in, in middle school. So it, it's still a, a matter of equity of access. And I'm, again, just trying to, trying to make sure that I understand that all of these funds specifically within ASB is really being used as efficiently as possible. Try and keep the costs for kids and families as low as possible.
Yeah, I, I truly do appreciate that question. How can we, what? So we can bring, why don't we bring a, a breakdown of just the revenue pay-to-play to the hearing and then what else would help answer your question from a data standpoint?
I, I think, I think that would help, just, just having the breakdown and knowing where those funds go, what they, what they cover.
Yeah. So then if I might respond to the second part of that, I, I share your, I think we all share your value about that in terms of the equity of it. So part of the issue is that even though there's a, like a healthy balance in the ASB, I'm also sort of cognizant of what now, when we establish this new normal, what is now an annual and expense and an annual revenue that's sort of normalized? If that makes sense? Because what you can do is you say, oh, well, you know what? We have a balance. So therefore these programs don't even need any money. And then you sort of establish this baseline where they don't have enough money to actually run their annual program. And you're just relying on the balance of the, uh, it's sort of what happened to the general fund. Hate to say, but, um, so what we're trying to do is establish how much annual revenue and expenses is, is reasonable and normal now. And then in what ways can we reasonably? You know, we don't want that ASB fund to grow anymore because we want the message to our community to be that when we raise money in the community for co-curricular activity, it's for the kids that are in school now. It's not for the kids ten years from now, or it's not just to build a big balance. Like there is an intentionality around what we ask for. And so, yeah, I just wanted to say that. Do we have enough time for me to say one other thing in conclusion, how we're doing, Superintendent?
Can I, can I ask one question that's related to ASB? I had written this down, but I didn't ask it, but since we got into it, like, how are we affording to cover the cost, you know, because of hospital sixteen sixty? How are we, you know, how are we covering the cost of free, of the students who have free induced press lunch who aren't paying those fees? I, I think I understand how we are doing that now, but I, I just wanted to bring that up, that that is something that's gonna catch up to us. If we start lowering these fees because, you know, some of this, some of those fees are, are, are paying for a, a law that requires us not to charge students on free use press lunch.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if I, go ahead. A simple answer to that, I have to say that just as a personal value, I'm sort of, not sort of, I am glad that we have the commitment to not charge those kids because to Director Cake and his point, like the, the, it's sort of as a safeguard for us that we're not gonna violate our own equity principles. Um, and that kids that need access to these programs, you're not gonna have some kids sitting at the sidelines because they can't afford a twenty-five dollar helmet rental fee, you know, like, so we can be pretty well assured that, you know, our families greatest in need, you know, the ones that get our, our free and reduced meals are gonna have unfettered, more or less unfettered access to programs. And I think that that's the right way to go. It's quote unquote expensive, you know? It's more expensive for districts that are sixty, seventy, eighty percent free and reduced lunch, right? Um, and I've been in those districts too. But, um, you know, I think we're, uh, one of Kara's slides, I think, just summarized, I think we're still in the low to mid thirty percents. And still, I think below the state average. So it's costly for us, but less costly than what a lot of districts are dealing with where maybe three quarters of their kids aren't paying. Uh, one final thing, if I might, uh, so I just had the opportunity to dialogue with the cabinet about our, the year-long discussions we've been having about athletics. And just, I was worried after our conversation at last meeting that it sort of left with a negative feeling about like the value of athletics. And I just wanted to say that we actually just got done spending, just had a really lengthy conversation talking about how many of the athletic programs in Tom Water have facets at them that we really wanna replicate and expand to the entire district. The volunteerism that you see in our athletic program is what we want to uh, expand and accelerate, um, the enthusiasm and the commitment. Um, and I don't want anybody kind of approaching this budget from thinking that somehow athletics is being devalued. It, because that's not the intent. Um, if anything, it's the exact opposite. How are the excellent, how, how is the excellence in our athletic programs? How can that be replicated throughout our entire district? So I just wanted to, to say that so that the intent is clear. That's all, all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ben and Kira. Okay, great. All right. Next, we're gonna move on to the superintendent's report. Pass it back over to Superintendent Bogutin.
Thank you. I'll, I'll keep this pretty brief tonight. I'm really excited to announce a couple new, a new hirings. You just approved it in the consent agenda. And so if you took a little closer look at that, we have a new director of secondary education. So I'm excited to welcome Dina Alley as our new director of secondary ed effective July first. Um, she actually took a little bit of time off and I think begins sometime next week. And so Dina brings extensive leadership experience across multiple district roles, including serving as the director of human resources for North Thurston Public Schools and the Yakima School District. And she, prior to her HR leadership role, she spent eight years as a director of academies at K-12 in Shelton School District, designing innovative academy models, college and career readiness programs recognized at the state level. And early in the career, she served as an associate assistant principal at Shelton High School and the director of field experiences at the University of Montana Western. So we're excited to welcome Dina to the district and we'll, uh, you'll get to meet her soon. And I'm also excited to announce Black Lake Elementary, you know, lost their assistant principal. And so in late June, stakeholders from Black Lake interviewed some outstanding applicants for the assistant principal position. And I'm excited to announce the hiring of Avery Butler. Avery just completed her eleventh year as an elementary teacher, most recently in fifth grade at Black Lake. And so we are excited to welcome Avery to this, our administration team. And we're excited to see her leadership skills in action in the coming year. So um, those are my two big things here in July and we'll, of course, get things rolling. We begin leadership, uh, our leadership team gets together uh, the week after next for our kickoff of our leadership academy, diving into a really robust around bringing our strategic plan to life. And really all the preparation stuff that goes into that. Um, and then later in the month of August, you know, we are, we welcome back our teachers. So, you know, the, the little summer of rest of, for July has sort of ended, but things are getting rolling here really quickly. So we're excited for the year and I'm excited to bring on these new two people. So that's all my report for today. Keep it brief.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments for Superintendent? Okay. All right. So next we have a couple of items under board discussion. So the first one is we had spent the last meeting talking a little bit about the board governance handbook and the section on public comment. So this originally came up at the May twenty-first board meeting, we're talking about where, well, prior to that, but just kind of trying to take a look at our public comment process and where in policy procedure governance protocols, things were, were written that we may want to adjust and create more flexibility around. So hopefully I'm remembering correctly because it was a while ago, but at our meeting, one of the things that we talked about is that the board always has the ability to, you know, put forward like a mid-meeting motion to extend public comment if needed. And so that had, had actually been, you know, part of the plan for if we were to get more people signed up than the thirty-minute time slot, because it, it's really that thirty minutes that's written in our, our protocol, I think was maybe the, the area that we felt like we had some restrictions around. And so so we talked about it a bit and I'll look to Director Keel and Director Adams to kind of jump in if I'm missing anything, but ultimately wanted to make sure Director Beard had an opportunity to weigh in, to talk about if there is something that we would like to specifically change about our board governance protocol. It does have the thirty minutes in there. Or if it's something that, since we know and understand that we always have the ability to have someone say, let's, you know, make a motion to extend time if we have more people than ten signed up for any given time, if that's really necessary. So with that, I'll toss it out to you all if there's anything else you wanna weigh in on or speak to on that.
I think the confusion, you know, came in because we were enforcing the thirty minutes. And so the first ten people get told that they get to speak. And the other ones say, you're beyond it. As long if if we go into it knowing that there are more than ten people and that we will that the assumption is that we're going to ex- expand the public speaking time. I I just worry about the people, you know, showing up or not showing up based on where they are on the list.
Is that something we can just change how we communicate that to the public too? Like, hey, you're, you know, you're in the top ten, you'll be speaking no matter what. And eleven through twenty, hey, you know, all it takes is a motion to extend the public comment. So you should be ready to go if the board agrees to extend the public comment time. Now, they're not being told that right now, are they?
No, I, we can, we can change that as just kind of our feedback as we get public comments. So we can, we can kind of add that, that the board has expressed interest in extending time. And and has, and, you know, again, please be ready, you know, to share if your name's called, if and when. So we won't hold you kind of to that, but again, because it will take a board action. So assuming you want to do that, we'll, we'll make sure that they know that that the the board has interest. We've had a conversation. They're interested in extending the time.
I I I think it gives us the flexibility because sometimes I worry that if we have a speaker that's coming, like we've had our, I mean, they're not going to be doing it anymore, but our strategic planning person like has this type timeline. And so it as, you know, if we, if we have that, I was, I was thinking about it after reading this memo, like, yes, we could go two hours, but if he was supposed to be speaking at seven o'clock and we're still in public comment, that was the only thing I was worried about. And so we could, we could extend it if if we have people who are who are supposed to be speaking to us at a particular time. So that that was my, that was my only concern.
I think there could be some flexibility and we can talk about this maybe later around, even just if you don't want to do it, you know, kind of depending on what the agenda looks like, you could move like we will continue with consent, we'll continue with public comment at the conclusion of the meeting. We'll like, so after the superintendent's report, we'll go back to public comment and continue. So there could be that, like, let some of these presenters or action items take place and then come back to public comment if you wanted. But again, I know there's always a little bit of an issue around hearing public comment prior to your action items.
Yeah, I think before action, yes.
So I think, and I think what you're, we've, we've discussed this sort of, again, board leadership, and I think with the board, to try to make our board meetings much more centered on reports that relate directly to action and action items and kind of condensing and kind of shortening those up. And more reports and extended sessions for our work sessions and keep that work more focused in our work sessions more in depth. And so I think that's kind of something we've talked about. Again, we can, as we look at scheduling those, you know, a little bit longer chunks of time for our work sessions, shorter in the action items and making sure that you're hearing, and that would give you an opportunity that we're public comment and the meeting's not going to go forever.
That makes sense.
Right. Anything else on this item? So the next one that we added here, so I'm gonna kind of turn to Director Adams to speak to this. So Director Adams was elected our legislative representative in December. Remember, our policy was written in a way that said that would take over for that role July one. So July one came, turned over to legislative rep. And Director Adams had asked a few questions about what this might look like. So I said, let's talk about it at this meeting. So would you like to hop in and speak to that?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Sure. Oh, one thing too, going back to the other situation on the other issue. I think that several times we've had it where we had thirty minutes, but then people spoke for less or people didn't show up. So I think it's good to tell the public that if you're, you know, in the top twenty, there's a chance that you will be able to speak too. That's another thing. So that they just, like you, so they don't not show up. Okay, now on the legislative thing, so I thought it was odd that we were chosen to do something in December. And then the legislature actually started in January, but we didn't even have the role until in July. And there's no legislative session right now. So that was my thought that that was kind of a mistiming thing. The other factor is, is that I'm not running again. And so I would be out of a job in November. And so I would just serve in the role when there's no legislative session or anything during the summer and or the latter part of the summer, early part of the fall. And then there's no action going on. So the action doesn't start until you get right, ready for the legislative session to our items that we want to focus on. So it just seemed to me to be ill timed for the position and for me acting in that role starting in July, and it would only go through October. So my idea, my recommendation is that we would have somebody who is going to be here on the board who's, you know, either running again, unopposed, or they are set, like, for example, Casey, he's set. He's not having to run again. That would make a lot more sense for the continuity of things rather than somebody starting and then not being able to follow through in the position coming up as of the first part of November.
Darby, do you want to answer that? Or you want me to answer it?
Regarding General Assembly?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, Joe, we we have talked about the fact that a large, a large part of the of the legislative rep role is General Assembly. And and that happens September, sometimes October, but so, so, so there, there is definitely a task that needs to be done outside of the legislative session and doing that rep part of it. So that's a consideration for essentially what it sounds like you're, you're asking is if there is somebody else on the board who would be interested in serving as the legislative rep, that would include doing the, doing the General Assembly, correct?
Correct. Yes, because I say that you're setting the, you're helping to set the items of focus. But then there's no follow through because you just would set it. And I think it's much more focused on the board being successful and getting their input. If you have somebody who's actually going to not just be there and then not be in a position to do anything.
So any, anyone have any, any thoughts?
I mean, you, you, you could make that same argument for four out of the five board members.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to get into the election stuff too much, but four out of five of us might not be here, or four or five of us could be here or somewhere in between. You know, there's going to be different people, so.
That's my point. Yeah. To me, as I say, it's unfortunate of, and I, I know that we have, the boards changed it so that if you start in, if the, if the position is chosen in December, then you start immediately now, as I understand it. And it was, I think it was very poorly structured that when I thought that I was going to do that position, I thought I was going to get a start in January. And here it is, you know, six, seven months later. It just, it doesn't make any sense to me to do something for a month or two, and then I'm gone, you know, I, so anything that I worked on, maybe it's stuff that the other board members don't even want to do, you know, as far as that goes. So to me, it just seems a not a very smart thing to have somebody who's not going to be here at that time.
I, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. For the, you know, you're not continuing in into January. Kind of the idea is, you know, the, I, I believe the idea was starting in in July, because it is, it is preparing for the General Assembly and understanding everything that goes into the General Assembly and being a part of that. And that is very important. It is, it is kind of hard to just jump in in January if you've not been part of that process. And so I think that was, you know, why, starting in July, so you're part of the General Assembly and then you go into session. I totally get the point you're making that you're not going to be on the board anymore. But I think that was kind, kind of the reason is to be, to be part of the General Assembly. The, right now is the busiest, is as busy as session, I think, trying to understand where where, where the rest of the board, what the rest of the board feels about these positions that are going to be voted on and and giving you input on how to vote on that at General Assembly.
Okay, but as I say, my point is, after the end of October, I won't be here to convey anything. It's not January, it's the end of, it's that.
But, but you are, but you are here in September to convey, to vote on behalf of Tom Water at General Assembly.
Okay, I'm still making my request because as I say, I don't see it as being logical to have somebody do something for a short period of time. And then in the end of October, there's, I'm not there anymore. So to me, it
Are you resigning as legislative rep? Is that what you're doing right now?
That was, that was, that was what I was suggesting. Yes, that it just didn't make, it wasn't in sync with the actual timing of things.
Well, if you're, if you're resigning, that's fine. Regardless of whether it makes, it makes perfect sense to me that you would vote in General Assembly. But if you don't want to do that, then I can understand because Darby's also not running. You know, and you did say, maybe we make Casey do it, but he's not here to say whether he would do it or not.
And make him do it. I'm saying that it would be logical because he's not running again because he doesn't have to.
Yeah, I, I understand, but he's not here to make that decision. And we need, we need someone to represent us at General Assembly.
Okay. All right. So as I say, I was hoping somebody else would do it because of the logic of things. I am a logical person. So you want me to do this for a month or two, and then I'm out the door and then other people in the, on their board, then they won't know all the background and everything. All I can do is give a short little report like you've done over the years, when it was your position. And as I say, I, I think it leaves the board ill-prepared to deal with stuff starting in November. And I'm all big for having the board be as wise and strong as it can be.
I'm going into problem solving mode right now. So someone stop me. Not necessarily the, this isn't logic, but Dar- Darby is, you're good at this, but you are already board president. So like, I would love, you know, love for you to organize this because really what it is, is just organizing the rest of us. Or I can, I can put, I can also put out the spreadsheet, the, the, I just, I can't be there to represent Tom Water because I'm doing other things with General Assembly. So we, we lose a vote if it's me. And but if, but if we want to share this, if we want to share this, I just, we just need, Tom Water needs someone else to put in the votes. But I can send out the spreadsheet and have us all you know, share how we feel about these different positions. I'm just problem solving mode. And so that, that's just an idea, just to make sure Tom Water has a voice.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's, I mean, it's critically important. This is, this is the biggest role that a legislative rep has. And again, the legislative rep is that it's a representative. It's not that person doing everything all by themselves and then takes all of that knowledge and it just disappears. That's like completely counter to the point of going through and looking at what is being proposed, bringing that information to the board and everyone having an opportunity to weigh in and kind of give your thoughts and input. And then you know, like, again, Jill, as we talked about, it's a technical exercise at that point. Because you've collected the feedback from the board members and then you go to the assembly and you vote based off of what the board has already said. And so it's whether you're going to be on the board a couple of months later or not, it doesn't change the fact that you've actually been on the board for a couple of years and have a good understanding. You've participated when it was either myself or Director Beard that was, that was doing that for General Assembly. So Ty? Any, any thoughts?
I mean, if it's a matter of someone doing it, I I will do it if Jill is absolutely not going to do it and she's officially resigning and we need someone to do that role. I, I would lean on you guys as, as being the the least experienced person in this role. But like you said, it's a, it's a it's a team effort and you're, you're kind of a stand-in for your, for your team, so to speak. You're not really, I'm not there just making a, an appeal on, on Ty Keel from Tom Water. I'm there for the school district, so.
Okay, so you guys, this is a question of, of, again, time. We only have a few meetings left and the one meeting, a couple of meetings are going to be almost all on the budget. So when would I have time to convey any information to anybody within that short period of time? So that would be essentially in, in October to be able to convey anything. In the meantime, I would need to, you know, and I found honestly, the survey thing very extensive and unwieldy and hard to understand. But yet I'm still supposed to be able to get your guys' viewpoint on this and then vote that in the month of October, all in a month.
So the General Assembly is September twentieth. It's a Saturday. It, it's, it's one day. So whoever's going to do this check, you know, want to make sure that you're available on the twentieth. There, there's a, there's a, yes, it is whatever, a few hundred pages of positions to read through. And there is an Excel spreadsheet for us to go through, you know, for us individually to go through to suggest how, you know, how we feel about each of those positions. And then, excuse me, for most part, we all agree to vote yes or no on, on particular positions. The, the, the conversation comes into play where it might be three, two, or, you know, or, you know, or some, or, or may, maybe someone doesn't have a, you know, doesn't have an opinion, but, and so it might be two, two. And then understanding where the board, you know, understanding where our representative, you know, which way our representative should be voting on this. So for the, for the most part, the, the, and then, and then sometimes we would, we would identify maybe, you know, things that look a bit controversial that we might want to, want to speak about just to make sure everyone understands it. But the work is definitely on, on us individually, not just on you, Jill, but on us individually to go through that, that few hundred pages and read the positions and, and say how, how we feel individually to then roll up into a board vote.
And so that conversation can happen, you know, and, and nothing is ever completely full. This is always part, yes, we have the, we have the budget hearing and the vote at the end of August, but you know, we this is part of the, of what we do too, especially if it's, you know, in September. So it can be a conversation at that meeting. It can be a conversation at the September work session. You know, if needed. So there is time, you know, like Melissa said, it's, it's a matter of getting that spreadsheet organized and sent out and asking the board members to do their homework to read through and provide their feedback. getting that spreadsheet organized and sent out and asking the board members to do their homework to read through and provide their feedback.
So you guys want me to go ahead and do it then? Few hundred pages, huh? Okay. And you guys are all gonna respond, I guess, huh?
Yes.
That's our job. Yeah.
That's our, our job. And, and having, having done it a couple of years and spent a lot of time organizing all of that, specifically that spreadsheet. You know, it is, it is one of the roles of, of a school board member is putting in the work to, to do that.
So we get the spreadsheet from Wasda?
I'll go check. I, the, the, I will have to just have to brag on Darby for a second. The, that, that spreadsheet from Wasa is basically Darby's. Like that, she's the one that came up with this. And Was has adopted it. So you can thank Darby for making your job even easier, Jill, because Was, they, they produce that spreadsheet now. So it's, it's a matter of sending it out to us with a, with a link to, I, I don't know. I mean, maybe you don't remember doing that Jill, but last year you, you were, you were provided this and the spreadsheet and you went through and, and read the positions and we talked about, and we talked about it for, before I went to general assembly. So maybe if you, maybe if you look at the materials, it might, it might come back to you.
I remember, as I say, but like you say, a few hundred pages for a short timer, you know, I, I'm, I guess I'll go ahead and do it, but I, I don't see that I'm going to be much of a help, but I'll, I'll do what I can.
I, I think you're a big help because you're, even though, I mean, you're still on this board and you're representing, you're representing the community, even, you know, in, in, until you're not on the board anymore. So I think you're a big help.
Okay. But honestly, you know, since we have just Zoom meetings, we have no contact with people. It doesn't even feel like a board anymore. So anyway, that's my viewpoint. But I'll do it.
Okay. I will, I will support you in this process because yes, the first time you do it, it's can be, you know, a little confusing, but you know, again, you, you've participated on the other side before. So it shouldn't, it shouldn't necessarily be a big deal. And again, take a look at your calendar. September 20th. If there isn't, if that's something that you are unable to do, that part I don't think is as big of a deal because we will have had that opportunity to gather the information. And so if somebody else needs to step in and actually be there to do the actual voting, then that's fine, I think.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Think we're good on board discussion. We will move into board comments. Couple of minutes. Anyone like to have anything they'd like to share? Go ahead, Ty.
I'm just going to make it short and sweet. First off was super excited to hear about Keith Mitchell's position from Ben and what he was talking about there. We spent some time talking about athletic programs and, and how you know, they want to bring aspects of the athletic programs and the sport that they receive in our community. I think you could say the same thing about some of our band programs and the music programs and different programs in the district. Our music programs are phenomenal. And this is a big part of it. So I think you could do the same thing. Same thing with that, you know, you want to take aspects of the music program and the success they're having and reproduce that in other areas of the district as well. Other than that, I just move on at summertime. Looking forward to the public hearings coming up on the budget stuff. Lots of good questions. See if I can, if we can answer those as best we can to the community and go from there. So that's it for me.
Jill, any last comments? Hearing none. I got not much else either. It's a pretty quiet time, which is good. I hope everyone is resting and enjoying their summer. So with that, I think we will go ahead and wrap it up and call it good, adjourning the meeting at 7:35 PM. Thanks, everyone.